Thank you, Jake.
No problem.
Good evening, everybody. Like to welcome you to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for January 13th, 2021. I'll read the preamble we do before each of our meetings. Good evening, this Chairman of the Wolford Board of Selectmen, I am declaring that an emergency exists and I am invoking the provisions of RSA 91- A colon 2 Roman numeral 3 B. Federal, state, local officials have determined that gatherings of 10 or more people pose a substantial risk to our community in its continuing efforts to combat the spread of COVID-19. In concurring with that determination, I also find that this meeting is imperative to the continued operation of town government and services, which are vital to public safety and confidence during this emergency. As such, this meeting will be conducted without a quorum of this body physically present in the same location. At this time, I also welcome members of the public accessing this meeting remotely. Even though this meeting is being conducted in a unique manner under unusual circumstances, the usual rules of conduct in decorum apply. Any person found to be disrupting this meeting will be asked to cease the disruption. Should the disruptive behavior continue thereafter, that person will be removed from this meeting. Please note that all votes taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their name, please state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. I'll start with Linda. I think you muted, Linda.
Oh, Linda Murray, I'm in a room by myself in my house. No, I'm having trouble. Can you hear me now?
Yep, we can hear you.
Can you hear me? Okay, Linda Murray in a room by myself in my house. I'm having internet problems, so if I am not heard, it's because I'm having a connection problem.
Hey, thank you, Linda. Dave Bowers?
In a room with Christine, wife, wife unit, about 18 feet away.
Okay, thank you. Dave Senical?
I'm Dave Senical, I'm in a room by myself.
And Paul?
Good evening, I'm Paul O'Brien, I'm in a room by myself at my home.
Thank you, Paul, and I'm Brad Harriman, I'm also here at home in a room by myself.
Okay, Mr. Penny, do we have a need for non-public this evening?
Mr. Chairman, we do not.
Okay, thank. That's nice to hear. Okay. Next on our agenda is the consideration of minutes of December 9th. Does anybody have any? Comments or?
Yeah, I noticed as I went through, and I'm not quite sure what it means. On the vote, we have, let's, we have an extra number at the end, so we have, let's say for the wastewater, we have 5-0-1.
Right.
So should they just say 5-2-1? It should say 5. You gotta, there's no 2-1. It should just say 5 in favor.
Right.
And that's all the way through on all the votes.
Yes.
Yeah, I saw that too. That doesn't refer to the CIP vote?
It does.
Yes, I did it. It's noted before that.
Let's back up the videotape, it's the CIP.
Okay. My last one is on page 12, under other business. First line, it says, Mr. Penny, you received late this afternoon for the 2000, and it shouldn't say warrant articles, it should say tax rate.
Tax rate.
And the same thing in the motion says the 2000 tax rate.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay, Linda, anybody else have anything?
Move to approve as amended?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the December 9th minutes as amended. Any other discussion? Seeing none, have a roll call vote. Linda?
Yes.
Dave Bowers?
Yes.
Dave Senical?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
And Brad Hammer votes yes also. Thank you. December 16th minutes.
Brad, I have one on page 8. It's under Hopewell and Bond. And it's the second sentence, and the second sentence says the roof is unsafe. I don't think that that was the intent. My understanding was the roof leaked, which caused an unsafe issue on the ice.
Correct.
And other ones? Seeing none, entertain a motion?
A move we approve as amended, December 16th.
Second. A motion and a second to approve the December 16th minutes as amended. Any other discussion? Seeing none, have a roll call vote. Linda?
Yes.
Dave Bowers?
Yeah.
Dave Senical?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
And Brad votes yes also. Okay. Next on our agenda, we have public hearings for three warrant articles over $100,000. I will get the right paper here. I'll read the first one into the minutes here. Okay. Warrant article, this is number A. Let's see.
Mr. Chairman, I'll put it on the screen so the public can see, okay?
Okay, that's very good. Thank you. So for the 2021 bond issue not to exceed the amount of $1,850,000 from the Electric Enterprise Fund for the purpose of constructing and converting the distribution system voltage from 4 KV to 12.47 KV on North Main Street to Tufton Borough. Actually, I'll read the whole thing the way you have it there, it's more detailed. Do the town vote to raise appropriate sum of $1,850,000 from the Electric Enterprise Fund for the purpose of constructing and converting distribution system voltage 4 KV to 12.47 KV on North Main Street, Forest Road, north to the end of, in the circuit. In the circuit 2-1. Further, to authorize the issuance of $1,850,000 in bonds or notes for this project in accordance with RSA 33 Municipal Finance Act and to further authorize the Board of Selectmen to issue and negotiate the rate of interest, maturity, and other terms for this purpose. This project shall be paid entirely by surplus funds of the Electric Enterprise Fund and will not result in any increase in the tax rate or the electric rate. So do we have any comments or questions from the board before we open the public hearing? Seeing none, we'll open up a public hearing. Anybody out there in the audience wish to comment or ask questions on this, this warrant article?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have anyone showing up as commenting.
Thank you very much. So close the public hearing, board members. Anybody like to make a motion to recommend this? Do we recommend this one at this point, Mr. Penny, or do we move forward?
Yes, that would be correct.
I'll move to recommend Article 6, the Electric Distribution Conversion Phase Number 6.
Go, Paul.
Second. Second.
Your motion is second to recommend Article 6 for the Electric Distribution Conversion. Any other discussion? Seeing none, have a roll call vote. Linda?
Yes.
Dave Bowers?
Yes.
Dave Senical?
Yes.
Paul, Paul O'Brien?
Yes.
And Brad Hammer votes yes also. All right, thank you. So our next one is Article 7 for the Rapid Infiltration Basin known as the RIB Site Upgrade to State Revolving Fund. To see if a town will vote to raise appropriate the sum of $3,800,000 for the purpose of making upgrades to the Rapid Infiltration Basin's RIB site to bring it into compliance with the state permit. Further, to authorize the issuance of $3,800,000 in bonds or notes for this project in accordance with RSA 33 Municipal Finance Act and to further authorize the Board of Selectmen to issue and negotiate the rate of interest, maturity, and other terms for this purpose. Additionally, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to apply for and accept grants or other funds that may reduce the amount to be repaid and participate in the State Revolving Fund RSA 486. Dot 14, established for this purpose and to allow the Board of Selectmen to expend such monies as become available from the federal and state governments and pass any necessary vote relating, pass any necessary vote relating thereto. Principal and interest payments for this bond shall come from the lawsuit settlement. Therefore, this project will not result in any increase in the tax rate. Board members, do we have any discussion before we open up the public hearing on this one? Seeing none, I'll open up the public hearing. Anybody in the, in the audience wish to speak or ask questions regarding this warrant article?
Mr. Chairman, I see no indication of public.
Thank you. So I'll close the public hearing. Board members? What would we like to do with this one?
Brad?
Yes.
Hi, Dave.
Yeah, I, I am, as I'm reading this, I do apologize. I thought I talked about in the underline where it says bring into compliance with the state permit. Technically, it's what we're saying is bring into compliance with the state administrative order by consent. We don't actually have the permit. You know, we do have a groundwater permit, so I guess you could say, but it's the implication, I thought it was administrative order by consent, which is kind of driving everything. You know, it's, it's just, I'm not sure, we, we talked about that, did Mark Puffer make a comment about that, Jim? Do you remember? I don't remember. I would have to dig back into it, but I don't recall that.
Does it make any difference if we would do a change of wording at this date on a bonded warrant article? I mean, we are, it is to bring in and comply with the state permit. If we aren't in compliance with the state permit, they're not going to remove the administrative order by consent.
Exactly. That's, I guess that's the inference. So you're right, Linda. So technically, the state permit is our groundwater discharge permit, and that's what the administrative order is about. So resolve that, it resolves AOC. Okay, I think we're okay. I think as long as everyone understands it's a groundwater discharge permit and administrative order by consent. That language, as long as everyone understands the state permit, that's what it means. I think we're okay.
We may want to make, when you do your presentation, you may want to tie the permit and the administrative order by consent. Other than that, I think it's gonna work.
Okay, good. That's what I'll, I'll point it out in the deliberative session.
Any other comments from the board? Seeing none, entertain a motion?
I'll move that we approve this bond issue.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to recommend this bond issue. Any other discussion? The roll call vote. Linda?
Yes.
Dave Bowers?
Yes.
Dave Senical?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
And Brad Hammer, I'm going to abstain from this one, because my company I work for has been invited to, to bid on this one, so I will abstain. Okay. Moving on to our next one. Article 8, the Wastewater Treatment Plant Asset Management Plan for the State Revolving Fund reads as follows, to see if a town will vote to raise appropriate the sum of $30,000 for the purpose of developing an asset management program for the wastewater treatment plant. That will qualify the town for federal and state funds. Such funds to be raised by the issuance of bonds and notes not to exceed $30,000 under and in compliance with the provisions of RSA 33, the Municipal Finance Act and to further authorize the Board of Selectmen to issue and negotiate the rate of interest, maturity, and other terms for this purpose. Additionally, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to apply for and accept grants or other funds that may reduce the amount to be repaid and participate in the State Revolving Fund RSA 40, 486 dot 14 established for, for this purpose and to allow the Board of Selectmen to expend such monies as become available from the federal and state governments and pass any necessary vote relating thereto. This project is subject to loan forgiveness as outlined by the State Revolving Fund. Therefore, the project will not result in any increase in the tax rate. Board members, any questions? Or Dave, do, Dave Ford, do you have any comments on this one for us?
Yeah, this one's pretty straightforward, Brad. I think it's, we've done this three or four times before. We have a scope of work with the state. Once this gets approved at town meeting, then we have all documentation in, the loan and grant gets approved. We have a consultant already to do the work, helpers at the treatment plant. And by the end of the year, we're finishing up, we'll have a nice report, which will complete all the water sewer utilities as far as the first phase and getting all the inventories and getting the determination of values and replacement schedule. So good project, and this is good, good money for us.
Thank you, Dave. Okay, we're gonna open up the public hearing. Anybody out there in the audience wish to speak or ask any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I don't see anyone looking to make a comment.
Thank you. Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Board members? Like to entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve Article 8 wastewater treatment plant asset management plant warrant article.
Second.
Motion and a second to, to approve and recommend the Article 8 here for the wastewater treatment plant asset management plan. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote. Linda?
Yes.
Dave Bowers?
Yes.
Dave Senical?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
And Brad Hammer votes yes also. All right, thank you, everyone. Okay, next on our agenda is public input. If anybody out there in the audience this evening that wants to speak to us in public input?
Hi, Brad. Suzanne.
Hi, Suzanne.
Just wanted to say that as one member of the public audience, I've appreciated Jim having all of this up on the screen and typing it in as you go along. It's been very helpful. And on a lighter note, maybe not a lighter note, maybe a darker note, but given what's going on in the country, it was kind of nice to see you folks kind of cajoling each other in the beginning of the meeting. I know you each have your preferences and your views of what should and shouldn't be done, but I enjoyed watching you kind of laugh with each other. That was kind of nice.
Thank you. Anybody else out there have any comments for us? Hopefully as nice as that one.
Thank you, Suzanne.
We like those.
We do, we do.
Mr. Chairman, I don't see anybody.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to our bulk vote. The Weekly Manifest for January 8th. And we also have the, our bulk vote is return of construction observation agreements and bonds for two projects that have been completed. One for Paul Zimmer, one for Gail Antinucci. And entertain a motion on the bulk vote. I'll move.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the bulk vote, which are items A and B, as I just described. Any other discussion? Seeing none, have a roll call vote. Linda?
Yes.
Dave Bowers?
Yes.
Dave Senical?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
And Brad votes yes also.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Yes. Yes, Paul.
This, this may, this may clearly demonstrate that I'm not paying attention. Aren't we bonding the dock Friday? Or is that gonna be this Friday? That's Friday?
Yes.
Linda's laughing at me because I sent her a text, and I said, what are we doing here?
I couldn't get it to you fast enough.
All right, never mind. Roll the tape back.
Okay. Reset. Okay, next on agenda is Board of Committee appointments, which you don't have any this evening, so move on to new business. First item there is discussion of the ladder truck contract agreement.
Mr. Chairman, as you're aware, we're approaching town meeting. In town meeting, there's a warrant article for the replacement of the ladder truck. Early on, there was a lot of discussions about working with the vendor to secure different types of financing options. The vendor has told us that we anticipate seeing some price increasing, but they would be willing to hold the current price if we were to provide them with a returnable deposit. I provided you with a letter of intent. It was reviewed by legal counsel. It was also reviewed by myself and our finance director. We don't feel comfortable with this at this point. We feel that we need to really wait until the voters weigh in and tell us, yes, purchase the ladder truck. We don't feel comfortable in advancing the company, the money. I just wanted to brief the board on that. However, if the board so desired that they wanted to enter in the contract and use capital reserve funding with the potential of it, or with it being returned, if, if the voters turn it down, then you, you may do that, but at this point, I would not recommend we do that.
Okay. I guess a question I would have on that would be do we have any kind of feel for what could happen between and during the timeframe between now and town meeting? The next two months here, basically, for the pricing?
Yeah, so I, I tried to work with the chief in, in locking the vendor down on a percentage increase, a dollar amount increase. We really had some difficulties with that. We've got some documents that we're going through as well right now. I'm confident that we can make it happen at the, the budgeted amount. It's just how we get there is the question. So I, I feel very comfortable with where we're at. I don't think we should be advancing the company, the money to lock into the contract at this point.
Okay, thank you. Paul?
Yeah, just to, just to establish a kind of a pattern of facts here. Jim, when, when did the, when did the salesperson give you the the last quote?
So, roughly speaking? Yeah, so we had a series of quotes. In August, we received a quote through CIP process. Maybe it was July that, that was 1.6, 1.365. We got through CIP, got into budgetary process in late August, early September. The price came in at 138, which is what the warrant article is at. And then when we started talking with them about the lease options, as of the, the 30th of December, they were willing to hold that price provided that we provided the deposit. I said I wasn't sure about that. I wanted to have it reviewed by legal counsel. We did that, and at this point, they have to rerun it through their program. Haven't been able to get an estimate based on a percentage or a dollar figure, but again, I'm confident that we can make some concessions or renegotiate to get the, the truck at the price which is budgeted.
Follow-up question, Brad, if I might?
Sure, certainly.
Thank you. And back in December, the salesperson said the prices are gonna go up by now. Was it, was that kind of the narrative shorthand there?
Yeah, they, their quote writer that they use for these pieces of equipment is experiencing a, an upgrade effective January 1. So they'll have to rerun the truck, which we've asked them to do. And we will find out what the updated pricing will be.
So I'm not trying to be nasty here, but their software can't tell you what the new price is. But they want us to give them 900,000 bucks like right now?
That is correct.
And you'll take delivery of the truck in, in 12 to 18 months?
Estimated 60 days, so yes.
If I took, if I take 900,000 and put it in my bag, it might cost a capital. I just got the price increase paid for, and I left the price alone for you guys. This is not a good deal for us, so I think we need to have a chat with them. I'm sorry. Thank you, Brad.
Thank you, Paul. Linda?
Yeah, I'm, I'm very comfortable with Jim's approach. I'm with Paul. Why do we give him all this money ahead of time? Am I correct, Jim, that we would pay them on delivery of the truck under the other scenario?
So excellent question. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna sit down with them and discuss exactly that option. Whether we do cash on delivery, which is how we bought the last piece of apparatus, whether we do a deposit and then a certain payment schedule throughout the, the project, which is, is a common practice as well. We'll figure out what the best option is and we will have that ready for the day after town meeting essentially for execution of the contract.
Yes, any other questions or comments?
I just have one other, Brad. I mean, clearly they want to sell us a fire truck and we need to buy a fire truck. So, so there's a meeting of the minds there. You know, I think, I think you know, my counsel to Jim and Jim, you're, you're doing a great job. Do whatever you think is right. My counsel to Jim is, sounds like we might have a salesperson who's trying to, you know, trying to ma- manage this whole thing. I would, I'd kind of develop our offer. Call the CFO of Seagrave and just say, this is what we're thinking about doing. Is that going to cause a problem for you? And just lay it on the table. That would be my advice. Do whatever you think is right.
Thank you, Paul. Linda?
Yeah, are they still, i- if we buy it in a different manner, they still willing to give us a truck until our new truck comes in? Is that option still on the table no matter which way we go?
It is my understanding that that is still on the, the table. The way these organizations work is you have the, the parent company who manufactures the apparatus. You have a distributor who does some maintenance over here. That maintenance company, that sales company is essentially a dealership. They have the equipment that we would be leasing, provided it's still available. The hopes are that we, we can get this buttoned up rather quickly and get that loaner vehicle here leased for a dollar, because we are looking at at close to 460 days for delivery.
Okay, are you basically looking for a consensus from us or do we need to have a motion and a vote on this, Jim?
No, I don't think so. You've given me the direction that I needed. I just wanted to affirm what my thought process was with the board. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Bless your heart.
Okay, that's, okay, next on the agenda is our annual report cover photo dedication and memorials. I think we had an email from Amy earlier today with some pictures and comments.
Here's Amy. She is.
I am.
Yep, yep.
So we do this evening, Amy, would you like us to make a decision on the pictures, where they go? And kind of the format there for the front cover, back cover and all that good stuff?
Yes, if we could pick what you want to do for the cover, you'll see from what I sent you today. I gave the three employees that we're thinking of dedicating it to. They each have their picture and a little blurb underneath. And then the in-memories will follow right behind it with some information about what committee or where they worked in town. I guess I'm not really on the screen.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Paul?
For the, for the, maybe this is the easy part for the in-memories. Anybody in my view who's been a a member of a committee, a team, despite, you know, any kerfuffles that may have happened in my, in my view, and I think I'd like to believe others share that should be remembered.
I agree with you 100% on that.
Yeah, I think she's got that sorted out.
One issue is that there was a lot of very hard feelings. I mean, if we just put a memory and that I think he was only on the police commission, but we had a pretty strong group who were very uncomfortable with him and he resigned.
Yep.
So you'd recommend or you'd, you'd be still the same thing as you, you post the name in memory?
Just the name. I mean, yeah, different than what the other ones were, would be my feeling. You know, not any blurb. This is the name. I, I think we could get some pushback on that one.
Yeah, my thought was just the committee and the years of service and the, and the date of death, similar to what we're doing for the others. If we start getting into a lot of, and I, and I don't want to downgrade anybody's service or employment with the town. The difference between the ones that have the longer blurb, you know, died currently in service and the others are either retired or had moved on from the town, with the exception of Jim Rankin, he was still working for us as a lifeguard in the summers.
Yeah, and you're gonna, I saw, Amy, I saw her in that. You, you didn't have the exact dates. Do you need the exact?
I do have them now. Yeah, I have them now. He actually he has been lifeguarding since 2009.
I think it was before that, hasn't he? Rankin?
Well.
He was teaching swimming lessons when I took him as a kid at Brewster Beach, so.
There you go.
Around for a while.
I'm wondering if he might um, because Michelle has his date of hire in June of 2009, so I'm curious to wonder if if he yeah, he has been here longer than 2009. I'll have to double check that. He didn't volunteer to do this, did he?
Might have been, might have been through the Red Cross too, I'm not sure.
No.
Right, our chairman remembers him back at the turn of the century.
Well, that's about it.
Thank you, Paul.
You're welcome.
I'll make sure that, that we have a corrected date before I put that in. Um, because Mary DeVries is still getting me the information on Evelyn Wentworth, so I can have her dates. Um, I just saw her obituary posted, but it didn't have any dates. It just mentions that she worked for the information booth in the Chamber of Commerce for a number of years.
What a nice person.
Um, and Pat is working on some of the the dates where you see I have question marks, like when Mr. Batstone was a police officer. When Dennis Davy was the prosecutor. I have Ben's police commissioner years, but I don't have his budget committee, so we're still looking for those.
Okay. Yeah, so I think those all look good. I think just getting through the details there, Amy, I think you'd be in good shape with all of that.
Jerry, Jerry Williams' picture might change because the guys think that they, they think somewhere they have a picture of him in the sidewalk cloud. And if they do, I'm going to switch it.
Okay.
That's good.
All right.
All right, and then you need to go back to maybe some of those landscape photos. Or I don't, whatever you want to do for the front, the back. I don't know how you want to do it. Sometimes we put pictures on the back. Last year, we put the phone, the phone list on the back. But we have put picture, you know, a picture on the front and a picture on the back.
This year was a hard year to get pictures of projects we've done because people weren't around.
I have lots of historical pictures. If anybody wants any, Main Street from 100 years ago or anything.
I don't know. I kind of like the solitude of those, of the pilings.
Yeah, I was looking at that one too.
Either the one with the with the bird in it or the one without.
Michelle can he'll put it in a, a picture that's a, a quality that we want to put on a cover on any of these.
Yes.
These are before.
I looked him up on Facebook. He had some others, like he had one with the electric boat in it. I sent it to Barry. With the stars behind it. It was really pretty. He's got tongues on.
If there's other ones in there you want to use, that's fine. These are just the ones he'd sent me.
He's, he's incredible. For those people that are, you know, it's Wolfboro Waters. You want to see a lot of the stuff that's on Wolfboro Waters, that's him. He did it. He just loves the town. Loves going and finding the pretty pictures and doing not only photographs, but also drone photography. He's great. I like that. I like that one you mentioned.
Which one do you like?
That kind of gives a look at the depth of the downtown in the direction that we usually don't. You have a state of the church.
Kind of nice too.
You get a coming from the town hall. This is going down the other way and you could put it on the back. I don't know if you can really see it.
Yeah.
You get to the at the, going the other direction.
Paul?
Yes. No, I didn't, sir. I was, I was making a motion.
You're making a motion to, for one?
No, I wasn't. I was trying to scratch my head.
I thought he said make an emotion too, Dave.
That's what I thought.
I'm motion, never mind.
What if we do this one? Can I get it on here? The one with the pilings in the dark? And then, but I can put, you know, the town report information in the sky of the picture. Like, you know, 2020 annual report.
Yeah, move it closer to the camera. There you go.
All right, this one has the bird in it. And then this one's the plain one. It kind of has the glow of the sky.
The dolphins, isn't that the dolphins?
Yeah, it is.
Yep.
But it's a dolphin.
You can put writing here.
I like that one myself.
Yeah.
I do too.
And the other one I liked was the one that Linda showed from the air on the back.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. This one, it's in a very different direction. I like the different direction.
Yep.
They're, they're both really.
So you want the pilings on the front and this one on the back?
Yep.
I think that's what we're saying, yeah.
I'll make a motion.
Russ can have him talk to you and he can get it to you, the quality you're going to need.
Okay.
Okay, so Dave made a motion to that. Is somebody going to second that?
Nope.
What? Did you say no, Paul?
No, I was talking to my, I was talking to this.
He's having a hard time tonight.
I'll, I'll second the motion, Dave, okay?
Yeah.
So we got a motion by Dave Senical, second by Brad to approve the piling for the front cover and the air review of downtown for the back cover. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, Linda?
Yes.
Dave Bowers?
Yes.
Dave Senical?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
And Brad, yes?
In abstain.
Okay. Anything else on that, Amy? Does that give you everything you need to move forward?
It works.
Thank you, Amy.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Amy.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Next on the agenda, other business. Do we have any other business to come before the board this evening?
Okay.
Do we want to announce to the public unless Jim's going to do it about when the deliberative session is going to be and where?
Yep, so thought we could do that at some point here, obviously. Do you want to do that, Jim, or? No?
No.
Doesn't matter.
I know it's on, it's up, we're going to have it at the, just give me the date one more time so I can write it in front of me. Is it the fourth?
Second.
Second, and the rain date is the, or snow date is the fourth.
So the fourth. Okay, that's going to be at the Kingswood Arts Center. Okay, just to announce to everybody, we are going to be holding our deliberative session on February 2nd at six, the 6:30 or 7 o'clock, 7 o'clock?
Seven.
7 o'clock, like you, at the Kingswood Arts Center up at the Kingswood Complex. And there'll be a snow date of the 4th of February, if we have to cancel on the 2nd. We will be following all the governor's guidelines put in place at the time for social distancing. And so everybody just please be aware of that. And we hope to have a, as good a turnaround as we can for that, so. So thank you, everybody, for that. Any other? Business this evening? Certainly, Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So goes without saying, we want to thank Kingswood for considering our request and giving us the turnaround. And we need to get some information out to the public about the the whole protocol. Amy or Jim, you want to speak as to how that's going to get out so folks understand what they're what they're going to need to do, deal with as they, as they show up?
We're, we're still actively working through that. We will absolutely get it up on the website. I'm not sure, Amy, we may not have time to get it into the newspaper, but we will absolutely get it on the website.
We could also address it, we could do our taping. I was going to say, we could also address it, we'd do our taping for the deliberative session. We could have a comment there that gets repeated on TV through those dates until a deliberative session too. So Linda, do you have a comment?
Yeah, when we say we're going to follow all the governor rules, am I correct? There is a mask mandate in the state of New Hampshire? And so they'll need to wear a mask to get into the facility. I think we need to say that.
I agree. I agree.
I can, I can make the paper with my notice so that I can have it in next week's paper and I'll run it a second time. And I will add to our posting this year some of those details. But yeah, the governor extended the mask mandate. I think that since we're, especially using someone else's property, we should certainly follow those protocols and we'll bring masks with us for folks who don't have them.
And in point of fact, the letter from the superintendent to Jim makes it clear that we have to follow CDC and state guidelines in terms of all the protocols that have to be followed. So we just probably want to reiterate what those are uh, when we get out there. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else under other business? Seeing none, we'll go into committee reports. Now Linda, we'll start with you.
Okay, I had, Paul and I had a dock committee meeting and I'll let Paul fill you in on that. I met with a sub group of the EDC and we were working on communications with the business community and how we might do that. I had a meeting with Wolfboro Waters Assessing Subcommittee and we were looking at some of the data that came back from our sampling this year. The one area where there seemed to be a rise in phosphorus was in Back Bay. And I, we also did a chemical treatment, which may have added to the matter of decomposing. But from that meeting, it's clear that we need to look at a watershed, watershed management plan for Back Bay and Wolfboro Bay and so we talked about that. I met with the Special Events Committee today. We reviewed 2020 and we're starting to look at 2021. I met with the Energy Group last Friday and they're working on their sub groups and working to see if they can get an electric charging station up and going. And I went to the budget hearing with Brad and Paul. and I went to the budget hearing with uh Brad and Paul last night. That's all I have.
Thank you, Linda. Uh Dave Bowers?
No meetings.
No meetings. Thank you, Dave. Uh Dave Senical?
I had no meetings as well.
Thank you, Dave. Paul?
Uh, so we did have a meeting of the docs committee. Um, the doc committee reviewed uh under the tutelage of our town manager, three pieces of paper, actually four. Um, a one-page plan that talks about how much the docs are gonna cost by phase, by sequence. When they begin, when they're estimated to end. I thought that was an excellent piece of paper. I don't know whether Jim or Dave or whoever did it, but that was pretty darn good. Um, the uh the second thing that was reviewed was uh the map of the of the physical docs. Um, and then we we talked about the warrant articles. The doc committee is comprised of two budget committee members. So folks from the Economic Development Committee and and others, uh the doc committee voted unanimously to support to support both the repair of the uh of the docs, which is in one of our warrant articles, and they also voted unanimously to support the extension uh of the docs, uh which are in the warrant articles. Just a little bit of a fun fact, I asked Mr. Ford to give us this, and this will be, we'll talk about this when we announce it. You know, my question today was, so the the extension of the docs is three hundred thousand dollars. That's what it's gonna cost, and there is, you know, a bit of consternation about whether that's a need or want, or should we do this, or what's the economic impact? Uh, this this, the extension of the docs, if you divide it by the amount of boat square boat footage, if you take an average boat size of twenty-two feet and you divide it in the amount of dock extension we're gonna put out, we're depending upon how people park, it could be anywhere from eighteen to twenty-four parking spaces. And then if you take those numbers and divide it into three hundred grand, it costs about fifteen thousand dollars to build a parking space with a fifty-year life. So I I think I think this is, uh, you know, we'll have to talk about this at the uh uh when we do our taping, cuz this is one area where our friends at the budget committee pushed back and said no no support on this one. Uh, so we have to you know, we have to help the the public understand our point of view on that. And as uh as you all know, I've been the selectman's representative to the budget committee. I wanna congratulate Jim, Casey, and everybody in the town uh uh departments. Uh, they busted their I'm gonna use a bad word, they busted their ass uh to put together a great budget. And um we went in with a budget and came out with a budget was within three tenths of one percent of what we went in with. So uh the budget committee did what they had to do. And they found, on average, three dollars per thousand of efficiencies. Three dollars for every thousand dollars of budget. So that tells us that our people in our budget committee and our and our town manager, at least in my view, where I come from, they're within three tenths of one percent of scrutiny. You're doing a pretty darn good job. We came within ninety, we came to ninety-six percent of our capital ask, the 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 no, not a good idea for the budget committee perspective was on the town dock extension. But all the others uh were either passed by overwhelming majority or unanimous uh majority. Uh, we had a couple of uh occasional uh bumps in the road. Budgets are tough. Um, you know, it's about, it's about, you know, really beating up the numbers. But when it starts to be beating up the people, that's when we all stop and take a deep breath and reboot. But I think the uh, I think at the end of the day, we had a good conversation with those folks last night. Uh, and I call it healthy pushing and shoving on issues as opposed to people. So um congratulations to the town people. We now have to go convince folks on two things. One is uh I think the, well, a number of things, but we have to convince folks that the reorganization of the Public Works Department makes a whole bunch of good sense. And we have to help people understand our position on why expanding the town docks makes a whole hell of a lot of good sense. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Paul. I'm sorry of myself. I had a uh just had a couple of budget committee uh meetings with uh Linda and Paul on this past week and stuff, and that was it for me, so. Uh, town manager's report.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, um, we've hit it again. I mean, budgets, budgets, budgets. Um and I would just like to say as town manager, one, I'd like to thank the staff for their patience, their understanding, their hard work in delivering great budgets. I'd also like to thank the elected officials, Board of Selectmen, the Budget Committee. Um, they do a mountain of work. Um, and it's it's not fun. It's challenging. Um, and at the end of it, you know, we were all really able to pretty much shake hands and and be satisfied with with the outcome. Um, so I I'm proud to be a member of this community. I I think this was a a an okay process, and I'm really looking forward to next year um with having Casey on board completely. And I think her and I are gonna make a great team to deliver a good product next year. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, questions for the press? Alyssa, you out here with us this evening? Don't see her out here, so we'll move on to public input, our second session. Anybody out there wish to come and ask any questions this evening?
I don't see any, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, we have no need for non-public this evening, so I'll actually entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Senical. As you do adjourn. Mr. Senical. I'll make a motion. Paul will second.
Mr. Bowers will second.
Okay. Okay, motion by Dave Senical, second of Dave Bowers to adjourn. Any discussion? Say none, roll call vote. Linda?
Yes.
Dave Bowers?
Yeah.
Dave Senical?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes, sir.
And Brad votes yes also. Thank you for the nice short agenda, Mr. Pinio, and we will see you shortly, I'm sure.
Friday. Friday at four P M.
And we're gonna do bars on the on the docks. Thanks, Linda. I owe you one.